Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you coming out to our board meeting this evening. I'd like to welcome everybody out. It's good to be back in school. And we'll go ahead and get our meeting started tonight. Ms. Manuelito, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
I sure will.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Joan, would you like to do a roll call for us, please?
Charles Long. Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manuelito.
Here.
Kevin Mitchell.
Thank you. I think Mr. Hyatt had one change, late change to the agenda. I'll turn the time over to him for a second.
Mr. Mortensen, members of the board, I'd like to remove item 4E. It's on the consent agenda item. It's the $15,000. It's actually an in-kind donation from Mexico State University. I want to get a little bit more information on the work they did in our district last year before I put this on the agenda, as an agenda item next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. With that agenda change, do I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, hopefully you've had a chance to review the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
There's one, one thing. Under new business D, the employment superintendent's new employment contract extension, under there it has that I voted, I abstained from voting, I voted yes on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Would we like to review the tape, Joan, and we can present that for approval at our next meeting?
No, it doesn't.
No, we can approve it, but I don't make the correction. Yes.
Okay. All right, with that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you, sir. And a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Joan, I'm going to go ahead and abstain due to I wasn't here present during that meeting.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
I wasn't at the meeting either. I guess probably need to abstain as well at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, for a second?
Hi, second.
Kevin?
Yeah, yeah. So I guess it's tabled for the next, to the next meeting. We'll look at it again there. Okay, consent agenda, please, for A, B, C, and D. Is there a motion or any questions about these items?
Mr. Mortensen, members of the board, we had put A and B on there, but didn't get the information in, and so those are not up for approval. Number four, as you read it, is only for 4C, 4D, and 4E.
That's right. Yeah, A and B, you'll see, ladies and gentlemen, it says "none" at each of those. They're just placeholders on the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve items 4C and D? Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right, the next item on our agenda is number five, study circle. 5A is public comment. The first person that we have is Larry Foster.
Good evening, the school board and the community. My name is Larry Foster. I'm the second son of Navajo code talker. And my small presentation is going to be centered around for August the 14th, which is the National Code Talker Day and the Navajo Nation Code Talker Day. So just a small summary of my presentation. The Navajo Code Talker Day is designed, that day is designed to honor the declassification of the Navajo code. It's their code was 642, the MOS. That was a code that was designed back in 1942, and it was used between 1942 and 1946 for combat purposes from islands of Simone Islands, Guadalcanal, Saipan, Guam, Iwo Jima, and Okinawa. So there was over 640 young bilingual Navajo that served on the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th Marine Division. They were all under the Headquarters Signal Company. That's a radio company in each division, platoon. So they left, they were trained to utilize and put together the code with five main instructors. They left San Diego Harbor to North Island and Point Loma into Hawaii, came into Camp Tahara and to combat. I'm more familiar with the 5th Marine Division mainly because my father served in that division. And their combat orders were during the time was called Operation Stalemate. There was over 33 Navajo code talkers that were assigned to this 5th Marine Division. They were involved with the 31-day or 36-day hand-to-hand combat on Iwo Jima. And the 3rd Battalion, 26 Marines, 3rd Battalion, 28 Marines, they were assigned to take Mount Suribachi and to fight, to take over the airfields. So those were accomplished. And then the reason for being August the 14th day for Navajo code talkers is through a proclamation of back in, when President Carter was the president, he designated that day. So we honor that, so just wanted to mention that. And in closing, I wanted to give a small example of how the language was used here in codes. Here we have sheep, or let me say this, the peh, ana, nas, onse, besote, ana, ga. And then the second part of that is mai, and then tien. So I know the Navajo people speaking, understanding people here is not going to understand that because that's a code. So what it is, is the peh is sheep, that's S, ana is E, I, mouse, nas, onse is M, besote is pig, g, ana is I, e, ga, rabbit, R, mai, f, fox, F, tien, ice is I. So that whole word is simplify. So that's a code that was sent out. And then a lot of times at the end of the, like the, they say over and out, the 5th Marine Division uses a lot of ga, na, la, the rabbit went home. So you're all invited to come August the 13th and the 14th to honor the Navajo code talkers' families and descendants. The 13th, they're going to have a presentation at Navajo Council Chamber at 6:00 PM, and they're going to have a five and two-mile run. And then on the, on the 14th is the main day, they're going to have a parade and then the gathering at the Veterans Park, Memorial Park in Windoroc. And also the Navajo code talkers are going to be honored with their name mentioned. 3 o'clock, they're going to have a gore dance. So that's the schedule. You're all welcome to come, and we honor all the code talkers, we remember them, and in the future maybe it'll be taught as part of Navajo history here in the McKinley County schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. We appreciate you and the service that your family has rendered. The next person, the last person that we have is Andrea Thomas.
Good evening, superintendent, school board, parents, audience. I come here this evening just to thank Superintendent Hyatt and the board, HEMS, and administration for the school supplies that was put out to all the Gallup-McKinley County schools. It's very appreciative from the parents, grandparents, and guardians. I also want to thank Mr. Hyatt for doing a very outstanding job being a superintendent. Me as a parent of a high school student who's now a senior, and I have been at these meetings speaking before with previous superintendents, and back then I just get a smile and a nod. But here I have seen action the past couple of years with you being in there, and I'd like to thank you for that and to keep going forward. And with the board and administration as well, to keep going forward. You guys are doing all a good job. Teamwork is the main, main thing for success and achievement as well, as well as credibility. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. Just a reminder, for public comment, we need to have the papers in before the meeting starts, and we'll get you, we'll get you up there and lined up on the agenda. The next thing is 5B on the agenda, which is our superintendent report.
Mr. Morton, members of the board, I have a few different things we're going to talk about tonight. I'm going to go through a list of items, and then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the school data, some updates with that with Mr. Horacek. And then following that, as mentioned on the agenda, we'll have a presentation by Dr. Lovato and Dr. Ryan regarding career pathways and our initiatives this year with that kind of, with that work. We did have our first day of school yesterday. I've had the opportunity to visit, this week will be all the schools, but many of the schools towards the east, on the east side of our county. It's just been a great first day. We've had very, very few issues. Some of those things we're working through that we did have, but overall, it's been a successful start to the school year. Had opportunity to talk to a lot of students, a lot of staff, and also a lot of principals about the first day. And it's been, again, it's been a great start during that time. And also, many of you may have seen this as you're driving down the road after school, a lot of students taking home school supplies. And so that effort has continued to grow, and we're doing a better, better job at it each year. That started two years ago. This is our third year of implementation of school supplies for, for students. And if you haven't had a chance to look at the packet of supplies that each student gets, it's pretty significant. And again, that takes those costs off the backs of parents and place those costs underneath, underneath our watch, where it should be. The taxpayers fund education for students, and we should be using those dollars to make sure that we are taking care of all the educational needs of all of our students. In addition, I, we've talked a little bit, a little bit about this every board meeting, but just a reminder, if I haven't mentioned this part, we did find out from the PSCOC that the money which we fought for legislatively is starting to trickle in. We haven't seen it yet in our accounts, but there's few things that still yet have to be decided. But of the $10 million that we fought for, for Impact Aid districts this last year, they decided 6.3 million of that would go to our district, which is a significant portion of that. And that money will go straight to our teachage debt, which we have started out with almost a $50 million debt, and we're approximately around 10-ish million dollar debt. So that'll go a long ways to help us make sure that our debt gets paid down as soon as possible. In addition to that, we're still waiting to find out how much of the 24 million our school district will get, which will go towards facility needs, capital outlay needs in our district. Also, along those same lines, as you know, on the Public School Capital Outlay Task Force for the state of New Mexico, we had a meeting last week, and during the questioning session, I had the opportunity to ask questions to the director of the LSC, which is Mr. David Abbey. And in that questioning and that conversation, the state did admit that if Impact Aid is taking out of the formula as far as the money that's supported for the formula, that that does not disequalize the formula. And so I thought that was a monumental statement that we were able to get out of the state legis-- we know that it won't disequalize the formula, but that's what they have promoted for decades, that it will disequalize it if Impact Aid is not a part of it. Mr. Abbey admitted that that is not accurate, and so that's, that's huge for our district as we move forward to try to settle this issue with the state taking $22 million from our school district that should go to our students and their facility needs. A couple other items. On the 22nd, I will, I've been asked by the Legislative Education Study Committee to be on a panel to talk about issues for capital outlay for New Mexico, specifically and especially for Impact Aid districts. And so on the 22nd in Dulce, I'll be presenting there with the superintendent from Zuni Public School District, Mr. Daniel Benavides. As you know, we did release our new logo, and we're going through the process of replacing and promoting that new logo throughout the district, as you see on the podium here, and also on our Facebook page today, the logo changed. And you'll see more and more of that on our items for the district or property of the district here over the next few weeks. That concludes my few items. I'm going to have Mr. Gerald Horacek come up. We discovered some more information from the state of New Mexico, actually state data. So we always use state data when we present to the public. We don't use our own data. We don't make up data. The data comes from the state. Unfortunately, our local tabloid seems to think that they know better than the state of New Mexico about what the actual data is. And so Mr. Horacek's going to give an update. There's one thing which we did have an error on that we're going to correct today, which actually is a positive thing for our school district. And so I'll turn the time over to him to talk about that.
Mr. Hyatt, before you start your presentation?
Sure.
We have a distinguished guest here in our, in our presence from the Navajo Nation. And then we also have a very valuable asset to our district, which is another parent. And I know that we have suspended rules before where when we've had the mayor of Gallup come in, or a representative or senator come in, and our policy says two minutes, three minutes, but we've let them have the time more to express themselves. And I think that I would really like to hear from our Navajo Nation council delegate and also our parent that came. I, that is something that, and if it is, I'm trying to look back at our policy that has the 6 o'clock deadline. If that is the case, I would really like to add it to our public comment form. Sir?
Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Manuelito, that's not something that I decide. That would be the school board that decides on.
Do you have, I mean, Ms. Manuelito, is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I would like to make that a motion if we need to make it an action item. Yes, I would like to make a motion or just, or just, just to add, just to have the public comment, yeah, to be allowed to speak, sir.
I'll make a correction. I believe it's the board president that decides on that because it can't be added to the agenda.
We're just asking for additional public comment is all you're asking for.
Yes.
I'll allow it. I'll allow it. Let's, let's, let's do it after, after Mr. Horacek's presentation. We'll do that after the, the other presentations that we have, and we'll.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, president. No problem.
And while Bard is getting this set up, I do also want to stress that growth matters when it comes to how your students are doing academically, when it comes to ELA in math. So growth is extremely important. I know there's a misconception about that out there, and I do want to reiterate what Mr. Hyatt said, this is state data that we have. And so I just want you to look at, up on the screen. If you look for the five-year trend in math, this is, so the blue line is the state, and the green line is our school district. This is where the state was five years ago, and this is where we were. It's a pretty good-sized gap, right? Over five years, the state has grown less than 3%. We have grown, what is that, 7%, over 7%? 8%? It's over, it's almost 8%, right? So look how we've closed the gap. And once again, it's just a tribute to what the board has allowed us to do, and what the families in this community have allowed us to do, and what Mr. Hyatt has allowed us to do. And then the next one is English Language Arts proficiency. Five years ago, just want you to look at where the state was, 26.4, we were at 14.6. The state's grown about 6%, a little more than 6%. We have more than doubled our proficiency rate and closed the gap. That is powerful. That matters. And the beauty of that is, just for the audience, there's a child tied to that data and to those statistics. Just really powerful information. So that's updated from what we had at the last board meeting that I presented. We didn't have the state data in yet.
Mr. Horacek, I have a quick question for you. What do you, I mean, looking at, at that data, the chart, and the, you know, the proficiency growth and everything like that, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's astounding to see the growth. What is, I mean, what's the biggest stumbling block that we have from, you know, being higher than that? Like what's holding, what's holding us back from being higher than that?
I just think it's continually refining what we do. And then it's always, we want, we strive to make sure in the classroom that the correct standard is being taught and to the right rigor. And what I mean by rigor is, are the teachers teaching the right standard for 3rd grade or 5th grade or 7th grade? And then are they making it challenging enough to bring children up? And not making it easy enough to where they don't really help improve a student? Because what all kids want, regardless of where they live, where they come from, they all want to be challenged. They want to be held to high expectations. And I'm not saying we don't do that. We do. It's just getting that alignment in the classroom to make sure a 10th grade English teacher is teaching that 10th grade standard to that level of the 10th grade and not teaching it at the 7th grade level. Because that just, that just does a disservice to our kids. And what we need to do is just a better job at training in that area, and I think that's the biggest piece that probably holds us back. But I do want to be clear that we do a great job at what we do, but that's probably the biggest piece, just making sure we're on grade level with the standards.
It's impressive. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that you, you know, you and the, and the staff have all the tools, you know, all the tools that you need that we can, you know, that we can provide.
And I do want to share really important, we know this is really good, we're a really humble group, and we just, we want to get better every day. We never, we were never going to look at it and say, man, we've made it. Because a child is tied to that, and we need way more than 30%. However, for anyone to say that we're not doing really good things, you all know this, we are, because look how we've closed the gap with the state. The state has barely grown, and we have, we've doubled our growth. And that just says something about you all and the parents in our community and the administrators and the teachers that we're doing some good things.
Why do you think we're still behind where the state is, even though we're improving at a greater rate than they are?
It's hard for me to answer because we've improved almost 15% in ELA. That's a lot in five years when really the average growth per year is about 2%? And we've almost got to 15, so I think we're going to catch them.
You think another, another five years, we'll beat them?
No, I think sooner than that.
Really?
Don't you miss shot, I think in one or two years.
If you look at the graph and do the regression line, it's not going to be that. It's going to be pretty quickly.
Superintendent, Mr. Mortensen? Does, like, when we compare our Gallup-McKinley County School District to the largest school districts?
It's coming up.
Okay.
It's coming up.
Okay, so that, so I just want to say, does that make a factor in this? Because this is compared to the whole state?
Yes.
Compared to the smaller schools?
Yep.
Where they have maybe 300, 400 children, and we have 11,000?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's.
And in a lot of cases, it's, Mr. Mitchell, it's easier to move smaller districts than larger districts.
I think that's a key point, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mortensen, is when somebody comes along, like a charter school, and tries to compare 100 students to thousands of students and thinks that's, that is statistically accurate? That's just asinine, in my opinion, about what they're, what they're saying. And statistically, anybody that has anything to do with math can tell you that that's just not a comparable population.
Well, that was going to be my question. This number that you're providing us and the green mark up there, that's all of our students. It's just not one grade.
Nope, it's all everyone.
Because that's, that's another thing that I heard about was, they are using only one grade to see their growth?
Correct.
Or their proficiency, while this is our whole district, all of our students.
Correct. And I'll tell you what a lot, so a lot of districts do, some of our neighboring districts, they cherry pick like 3rd grade at certain elementary did really well, or 7th grade at a certain mid-school did really well in other districts. That doesn't tell you anything. What tells you things are when you do district-wide data that you're really doing the right thing. And I do want to point out, just in math real quick, look what the state did in math. They went down. They went down this year, and we did not. And so that's pretty significant.
I think, I think one thing that I've seen since my tenure here with, on the Board of Education, is when we didn't have a curriculum department. And now that we've implemented a curriculum department, we can say our kid from Thiru going to Navajo is at the same, they're all learning the same thing. It's not to where everybody's doing their own thing. We kind of have a guideline to where if a kid transfers, that kid will still be where he was in two different areas.
Correct.
And I think that is one thing that I've really, and even in my own family, I've had my kids go to a different school, but we could still rely on the same amount of education or teaching or curriculum that is being taught at that same school. So it kind of keeps them on the same flow.
And what you said is so important when it comes to people of poverty, because they move the most. And you level the playing field when you have that common curriculum because they get access to the same standards in a sequence. That's right. So I'm going to move into, we did some data, just came in for the 10 largest districts, which is what Mr. Mitchell was talking about. So it's, it's actually better than we, than what we talked about earlier with you all. So if you look at this, so just in the last year for English Language Arts, so you have Albuquerque Public Schools, Farmington, Gadsden, Gallup, Hobbs, Los Cruces, Los Lunas, Rio Rancho, Roswell, and Santa Fe, 10 largest districts. We are second in English Language Arts growth of the 10 largest districts. Only Hobbs beat us. However, if you go for the last two years, who do you think is number one in the growth? It's Gallup-McKinley County Schools, yes. And this matters. Growth matters. Because once again, there's a child tied to that data, and it's from all over the district. So significant, isn't it, in math? And I think for us, when we were talking internally, we thought if we stayed in the top three in math, that'd be great. Well, we ended up two and then one. It's pretty powerful. And it's part of our strategic plan, to stay in the top three. English. So this is English, sorry. In math is where we thought, now if we can stay in the top three, you know, be third, that'd be great. Well, in the last year, just want you to look at this graph, same 10 school districts, you notice the blue going in the wrong direction? I'm sorry, the purple? It means they went negative. So I'm just going to, as an example-- So, I'm just going to, as an example, Farmington went down 3.1% in this last year in math. We are number one in math growth, and only Hobbs is the only other of the 10 largest that actually grew just a little bit. And remember now, we're talking about Gallup McKinley County Schools, and let's just think about our history, right? It just adds more power to the slide. And then, so we're number one in one-year growth, and then, in two-year growth, we are still number one of the 10 largest districts. And so, that was speaking to what Mr. Mitchell talked about. And I just want to close with, for everyone in the audience, and for people that we work with and the board, this is really, like, monumental, incredible stuff. And we always thank the administration and teachers, and we thank parents, and we appreciate that. I can tell you now, if we didn't have the board's support, and Mr. Hyatt's vision of putting the right, people in the right places, and that involves all the assistant superintendents and everyone under them, if that didn't happen, you would never see this. So, we really do appreciate it, because at the end of the day, when we have that cohesiveness, it's the children in your districts that benefit from that. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Herasik, so we have math and English here, what other metrics are there?
From the state, there might be science, but I don't believe, not really. So, it's really math and ELA.
It's really, those are the two big ones, huh?
It's the two, it's what the state assessment is on, is really, yeah, math and ELA, because science is only three grade levels, it's hard, hard to do that. But ELA and math are 3 through 11.
So, if we see this kind of growth happening in our math and our language, do you believe that there will also be some growth in our ACT and our SAT scores?
What do you think, Mr. Hyatt? I'm going to defer you on that one.
Mr. Mortensen, members of the board, Ms. Manulito, that's a loaded question. Because there are two different kinds of tests that we're looking at, and so, you can't compare the two. Some people in the state right now are trying to say that they're comparable. We've done the research to find out that it's a totally different type of assessment. And so, it, one doesn't correlate to the other.
Is there still discussion of using the ACT as the next test assessment that New Mexico is going to be using?
Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Manulito, there is some, still some discussion. Obviously, we will have a new Secretary of Education in the near future, and so, it's up in the air about what direction the state will eventually go.
So, what are we doing? Are we still going with the same plan as before to, as the part, to continue to, like, the direction for the test? I don't know what kind of assessment's going to come out, but what are we using as, I don't know, if I'm trying to spit it out right?
Yeah, we know, we got it.
Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Manulito, so if the state does choose to go to an ACT/SAT-type of assessment, that will only be for the high school level. The database for questions and those types of things will still be similar to what we're using right now, 3 through 8. And so, our alignment will still be in place for that. We don't want to jump the gun, so that we're not spinning our wheels, doing work that we really didn't need to, until we get a little bit more direction from the state about where they're, where they're going with the assessment for high school. But we'll make those adjustments as soon as we feel confident that we're not taking any unnecessary risk.
And I just want to close with, for me, you see the beautiful graphs back there? They're all on the wall, and so, we wanted to get them up today for the meeting. However, we know they were a little bit bigger last year, so we will redo them, and we will make sure they're nice and big for the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herasik.
Mr. Mortensen and.
More questions, go ahead.
Mr. Hyatt, I don't have a question, I just would like to say that I am really impressed seeing the growth that Gallup McKinley County has come to within the last past two years. It's very important for our kids, in order for them to succeed, we need to see growth. And therefore, I really feel that growth is important.
Mr. Mortensen, if I could say one last word on this is.
Yes, sir.
It's, I believe it's, it's been difficult for a few in our community. Many recognize the growth and the importance of that. If you're not growing, you're not getting better, you're not catching up to the state or surpassing the state. But this is, we were the lowest district, performing district in the state of New Mexico, and now, we're in the middle, for example, for ELA, as far as proficiency rates. And while, obviously, we're not going to settle for that, I think it's valuable for our community to understand and recognize and continue to advocate for our students, and celebrate their successes, instead of a few trying to tear down their successes for their own gain. We've doubled the state growth at ELA. If somebody were to say that Gallup McKinley County Schools are going to double the growth of the state in ELA in reading five years ago, they'd think we were crazy. But we proved that that is not impossible, that we can do that. Our students are just as capable as any student in New Mexico, or anywhere in the country, and they're continually to grow. If you look at the trend of those graphs, there was no dip, there was no plateau. It can, the data shows it's continually getting better. And so, again, that doesn't mean that we couldn't have a year where we don't have that steep of increase, but the things that we're doing are showing that they work, and we want to continue to help students wherever we can with their academic needs. And so, again, this is just proof that what we're doing is working, and we'll continually adjust, because we're not perfect. There's lots of room for growth, and we'll continue to make those adjustments.
Mr. Mortensen, I would also like to echo what Mr. Mitchell stated. I think that, and also, what Mr. Herasik said, I mean, this has been a team effort on, on everybody's part. And, you know, I think that, I was very disappointed to hear, I was down in Phoenix for, with my dad, and, you know, just getting some comments about, you know, awful things that were being said by, about our district and our kids' progress. And I think that if individuals are here present, or would have the, the, to be strong enough, or brave enough, to come to us and let us, as a district, explain what our growth looks like, would be better than, you know, publishing it. And I think that it's disappointing that we work day and day so hard, our staff, our students work so hard, but yet, to not give them the credit that they deserve, or our faculty, our staff, the credit that they deserve of this proficiency growth that's happening is injustice. And I'm very disappointed that somebody could be that cruel to demean our children's academic performances. And I'm just so thankful that we, I really would like to continue to push to, I've seen it on Facebook, I've seen it in, like, now in the walls, and then up during the presentation for New Teacher Orientation a couple of, a week ago or so. And I think we really need to advertise this and continue to have our children shine in anywhere else that we, that will allow us, instead of the negativity that is continuing to bring the wonderful progress our children's making. So, I would really like to encourage you, Superintendent Hyatt and our staff, to continue to post this wherever. I've asked our Terry Fraser and Vanessa for copies, because I'm going to hit my chapters, and I want to show them these graphs. And I've asked them for 100 copies each of different things to give to our chapters. And I think that us spreading that positive word for our children is going to do more beneficial, will be more beneficial, instead of the negative stuff that, that try to bring our district down. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Manulito. I guess our next presenter.
If there's no more questions, we'll go on to the next presentation. Mr. Mortensen, members of the board, as I mentioned before, Dr. Ryan and Dr. Lovato are here to talk about career pathways. We had a little bit of a discussion, come on up, a little bit of discussion about this. I believe we were in Crown Point a few meetings back. And I had told you that we would do a longer presentation on our efforts through our strategic plan, and through our efforts to not only improve graduation rates, but make sure our students are not just academically prepared for college, but also prepared for whatever their career goal is in, in their life. And so, we're taking a fundamental shift, the board has directed that, that we look about making sure when students graduate, that they choose to go in the workforce, they choose to go to college, or tech school, or military, or whatever it might be, that they're prepared for those opportunities, and that they're thinking about those opportunities even as early as the elementary grade level. So, I'll turn the time over to them, and they have a presentation here for you, and there'll also be time for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Great. Can you all hear me okay? Okay, so I'm Carrie Lovato, I'm a Director of Instruction/College and Career Readiness. I've been in the district for 20 years, very invested. I have a kindergartner that just started at Lincoln Elementary. So, our work is really powerful to our entire district, and I want to thank the board and Mr. Hyatt for the privilege of working for Gallup McKinley County Schools, and being in a district that's absolutely progressive and forward-thinking, and allows us to put into action really great ideas that benefits our kids, so thank you for that. And I have Ashley with me to help click, and also, Mr. Hyatt said we have 15 minutes, but the clock stops every time he speaks. So, we have, so Ashley's going to keep us on, keep us on task. Mr. Mortensen, when you ask about what our next steps are, I think that was a perfect segue into this. There's three R-words up on the PowerPoint, rigor, relevance, and relationships. And those are really key words to our superintendent, and oftentimes, they're thought of in separate measures. So, when we think about our Tier One instruction, and really aligning our curriculum, and giving equal and equitable opportunities to learn to all of our students across the district, usually, that lens goes to rigor, making sure we're, we're teaching the skills at the grade level. And then, we forget about the other two really key ingredients to that success, which is relationships with kids and making their learning relevant. So, I think this entire presentation also will help to ask your question as to what are we going to do next to provide better opportunities for our kids? And it comes with a College and Career Readiness education program. So, this is the second layer to improving our Tier One instruction. So, College and Career Readiness, we, we've done a good job of making sure that we're teaching the right skills to our kids at the right grade level, and we're going to continue to work on that. But through a College and Career Readiness program, we can add two more layers, which is building relationships with adults, which you'll see later in the presentation, which has a really, is really impactful on student learning. And then, also, giving our kids opportunities to explore careers and employability skills at very young ages, which will add relevance to their learning. And those are two things that we don't often really hone in on and be very purposeful about. And so, the development of a College and Career Readiness program is, is the next layer. So, most importantly, we need to align it to our strategic plan. So, every aspect of the Curriculum and Instruction Department, with the help of every single department that's sitting at that table, we've kept that strategic Elevate 2022 plan kind of at the heart of our design and implementation. Some of it's direct, and some of it a little more indirect. Probably goal number two, creating pathways that connect student learning to their career goals, and strengthening our community partnerships is really the direct relationship to the Elevate 2022. But hopefully, indirectly, we're also increasing student engagement and academic performance, and also empowering our team, because this is, as you'll see we go through, is not going to be an easy task, because it's so multifaceted, and it's going to take our entire community throughout our entire county to really get this system up and running. All right, we could, we could talk for a long time about this, but we'll try not to, because Ashley and I really enjoy data. But when we presented this out to our school leaders, and even in talking with Mr. Hyatt, the why is super important. If you just start dumping initiatives onto people, they're not going to understand why we're doing it. And so, that starts with leadership, with the board, Elevate 2022, down to the district level. Then, it's our job to pass it to the leadership, and how it's going to ultimately improve our schools and do better for our kids. So, a little bit about the why to College and Career Readiness is our next step to improving Tier One instruction. So, pretty traditionally, there's three paths to post-secondary. You have a high school path, a mid-skill path, and a bachelor degree path. And really, those three paths determine, are determined by the choices that kids make after they leave school. And we really haven't had much impact on that, and that's the piece that we want to change. All right, little brief description, and then I'm going to have Ashley chime in on these graphs. So, the high school pathway is really the workers that enter the workforce with, with just a high school diploma. Then, you have your middle skills pathway with something that's a little bit more, a certificate and an A degree, some type of associate's or a business license, maybe like cosmetology, auto tech, something like that. Then, of course, you have your BA pathway, bachelor's, master's, or a doctoral degree. So, the trend data statistically that shows us from the Department of Labor, over the past 30 years, what's happened in these three pathways. So, it's kind of three things that we've observed. So, the high school pathway has really shrank. So, the job market for kiddos leaving high school to enter the mines, or the railroad, those types of industries straight out of high school and make a livable wage has really diminished. On the opposite end of that, we have grown our bachelor's and above degrees tremendously, almost to the point where we've saturated the market. So, we have people leaving college, or not even making it all the way through college, that can't find viable employment that makes a living wage. Luckily, the good news, because that was kind of bad news, the good news is that middle section, and because of technology and the increases in technology over the last 30 years, the middle skill pathway has significantly increased, and that's something that, as a school district, we can really target. So, Ashley, I'm going to let you jump in on that graph really fast.
If I could add really quick, I'll take out of the 15 minutes for a second. That middle category, the salaries for that middle category have also dramatically changed, and you may be hitting that in a minute, sorry, throwing that in on my own.
Well, we didn't have a whole bunch of time, but I can touch on that just briefly. So, and that's really jumped from that middle skills category to a livable wage between 28,000 and to, up to 35,000. So, most of the middle skill jobs that are considered middle skill would be 35,000, which is definitely a decent livable wage. No, I guess, yeah, okay. Ashley doesn't want to speak. Okay, so turning this vision into a reality, I mean, we can, we can live in grandiose land of, you know, we have nine high school, we have 35 schools, if you include our, our early college high school, you know, about, wouldn't it be great if? So, last year, it really came down to, we have to put the tires to the road, and say, "How do we turn this vision into a reality?" So, that's kind of our next section. So, we know the why, we know it's good for kids, so how do we make this happen? So, Mr. Hyatt provided for our department, really, three kind of overarching goals, which we consider our design stage. So, he said, for school year 2019, 2020, "I would like to see two pathways," and I'll get into exactly what a pathway is here in just a minute. "I want two pathways in all Gallup McKinley County High Schools with sequenced courses. I also want purposeful adult-student relationship time built into the master schedule for every secondary school, and I want a 6 through 12 employability skills curriculum implemented." Those are really lofty goals, that if you want to achieve, you have to get out of hypothetical and really quickly into the hard work. And this is where the departments, the community, the principals, the teachers, and hopefully, the students, when they, when this is rolled out to them officially, are going to be really excited about it, because I think you'll see we far exceeded our goals.
If I could add, I actually upped it to three by the end, that, and that there are new pathways in every single high school. And then, this, again, this is the first year of implementation, and the goal for the next year was that we'd have 100% of all students involved in pathways at our high school level.
Okay, so here's what we have accomplished, and again, we can talk about this for hours, so any other questions, or any other time you'd like to talk more about it, we'd be glad to. These are kind of the key accomplishments of what we were able to do in our design and be able to implement coming into this school year. So, really, starting February, we got down to business and really put things into place. So, the Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment Department actually built a curriculum framework and scope and sequence for an employability skills curriculum awareness. We'll talk a little bit more about that later on, but we had a choice. Do we go out and do we find a textbook company to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on to provide for us a curriculum? Or can we build a curriculum around our beliefs of a curriculum and implement it so that it really serves our kids? And that was the option we chose. We have more than two pathways in every single high school. We've made sure that those are aligned to Carl Perkins. We're utilizing our JOM funds to help us to benefit that, those pathways, and that we have licensures and FTEs at all schools to carry out the pathway. We've aligned all of our instructional materials, you can see. You can see there some of the examples. We had to go buy child development books and teacher preparation materials to support the teacher education pathway, so that would be an example. We standardized the pathways. That's really important, because we don't want a teacher education pathway in Navajo to look any different than a teacher pathway at Gallup High School. Those pathways are gonna be scoped and sequenced identically with the same exact resources. So that was really key. We've also met time and time again with UNM Gallup, who's been super supportive. They've increased their dual credit, their concurrent enrollment. And they also increased our ability to send college and career technical education students up to UNMG by offering us both AM and PM classes. So we'll see those numbers expand. And then just entering into community partnerships. I listed a few of them up there, NTU, the Greater Gallup Educational Development, I'm sorry, Economic Development Center, the Commerce. We had Marathon Petroleum partner with us and Workforce Solutions. So those are a few of our key accomplishments. Okay, this is, again, a lot of information, so hopefully everybody's doing okay. So we're gonna dive a little bit deeper into what does a pathway mean, because oftentimes, we throw around acronyms and we assume that people that aren't in education know what we're talking about. So let me go into a little deeper what the pathway means and then what pathways are being offered at our various schools. Okay, so, which one did you first? The left side? Okay, left side first. So when you're developing a pathway, it's really a three-course sequence that has to align to the New Mexico PED Career Cluster Guide, which is your overarching clusters. And then from that, you build a sequential three-course sequence for students to take that would culminate into some type of a capstone project. So an example would be welding one, welding two, welding three. And then they would go to UNM, to the auto tech that offers a certificate in which they're welding cars. So that would be like an example in the construction pathway. So the other key point of a pathway is you just can't randomly assign them. You can't just have an art pathway or a music pathway. You have to choose pathways that meet labor demand statistics. So you have to look at your local labor shed, which ours is the North Central, I think. And they have to meet the three criterias of high demand, high growth, and high wage standards. So you have to gear your pathways in order to continue funding for Carl Perkins around meeting those three. So we actually had to go and look at labor statistics and where we fall with our job markets in order to determine what pathways we wanted to support. And then on that right side, and I'm not gonna read you all of those, but those are really the pathway guidelines that the PED sets up to ensure that these pathways are beneficial to students. And I do want to emphasize, these pathway classes do not take away from their core instruction. They're still gonna have their math, their ELA, their social studies, and their science, nor do they completely replace their elective. So we still have PE, we still have choir, we still have band, we still have those options. These are core sequences that they would take throughout from their ninth through their 12th grade year. So you're really looking at one course each of those years. So they still have plenty of opportunity to have electives. Okay, so this is a hard slide to read, but it's super, super important. And I had to try to fit it onto one page. But I really would like you to look at the amazing pathways that our principals and leaders were able to establish at our high schools. So at the very top, those are the feeder schools. So we wanted to kind of put what mid-schools feed into each of those schools. But you'll see Crown Point, Gallup, Mia Mira, Navajo Pine. And notice at the top of many of those is health science. So health science absolutely meets the top three criteria of high demand, high wage, high growth. Some of the others that we could highlight that also meet that are teacher education, manufacturing and industry, and business management. And also, I'd like to note Tohachi, which was able to support the arts, audiovisual, technology, and communication, which is very up and coming with the film industry. So we think that's a really key program that we want to help her build, Ms. Allison, and sustain in Tohachi. So that's kind of an overview of the different career pathways that are available now to all of our kids. So these are implemented. Go back for just a second. So when I mean they're implemented, that means this year, we are offering either the first course or the first two courses in a sequence in each of these pathways. We have the textbooks, we have the teachers, and we have the students enrolled in the class. And hopefully, yesterday, they were in their seats. So that's super exciting.
If I could add one piece to this. When students are taking this course sequence, that doesn't mean that there is not a level of relevance in all the other core other courses that the students take throughout the school day or school year. So even though you may be an English teacher, the goal is to make sure that English, when they're teaching their standards, that they're also creating relevance to whatever those career pathways in the school that their students are involved in. So for example, if you have a health career pathway in your school, then the articles, for example, in a math or in an English or social studies class, whatever it might be, the goal is for those teachers also to incorporate health-related types of reading materials, other kinds of materials, into their lesson development, so that students are learning about their pathways, not just in their core sequence of classes, but also in their other core classes. And that's, again, builds on that need for relevance to tie students into their instruction and into what they want to do in their life.
Thank you. And we're gonna actually highlight that as well on the next page.
I wanted to steal your thunder.
That's okay. No, it's a perfect segue. So that's where we are with the pathways. And again, implementation stage, so we're still sending teachers to training. We're still, I'm doing needs assessment with my principals almost weekly, like, what can we get you? Giovanna is finding us amazing sources from which to be able to supply these teachers what they need to implement these classes. But we're up and we're running, and it's super exciting. So this next slide is the icing on the cake. So these are, not only did we meet the three overarching goals, again, not perfect, but we're up and running. We also had some really amazing opportunities that have come out of this work with our community, with the New Mexico PED and Priority Schools Bureau and School Turnaround. The first one I would like to highlight is that Mia Mira next door, because they were a CIA, help me, Ashley, CSI, CSI school. They were struggling with their graduation rate. So they had the opportunity last year to apply for what's called high school redesign, which the Priority Schools Bureau, in conjunction with John Hopkins, provides a pretty significant amount of money to redesign high schools so that they better serve kids. And through that, they've been able to create some more complex pathways. But they're actually also engaging in a school-wide project to build a tiny home and then sell back to the community in order to donate or to generate funds for maybe an organization of the student's choice. I don't know if they've got that far with it. But that tiny home will be contributed to by all of the pathway courses. So that's really exciting when Mr. Hyatt said, how are we tying this all together? They're gonna build a tiny home in order for students to see, you know, how does biomedical tie in? Well, homes have to be equipped for handicapped students. How does the construction tie in or architecture? So that's one way that's super exciting. Now, we have two more schools in application for high school redesign. So through High and Crown Point High, hopefully, we're gonna go to their Will and Capacity Interview will also be selected for that program, which means they will get additional funding to redesign their school. So we have those interviews next week with the state. Yes. We also were granted a gift from Marathon Petroleum in the amount of $75,000 to help build our construction and welding programs. So we'll have that check presentation. Maybe I'll send you all an invite in a couple of weeks. So all of that money was given to all of our high schools, with the exception of Mia Mira, because they were in the high school redesign grant. We have 169 more students attending CCTE classes at UNM Gallup. We are looking to explore a Greater Gallup Economic Development Center-Los Alamos Labs partnership. They want to come in and help us get our students opportunities for internships with Los Alamos Labs. We also, Ashley and I, just submitted a grant to the state for an additional $350,000 to build Project Lead the Way biomedical pathways in five of our high schools. And this is probably one of the most exciting for us is to offer precision exams for all of our pathway courses so that a student can leave that course with an industry certificate. All right, so we're gonna kind of go a little quicker through the two-pronged approach. Power of relationships, we know, is important on top of the employability skills curriculum. So we wanted to build that time for adult-student contact purposely into the master schedule and also give them time to work on employability skills. So we're gonna just cover briefly what our employability skills curriculum look like, and then you all can ask us any questions. I think we're good. Yeah, we're probably good. Okay. Go ahead, one more. All right, employability skills curriculum. So those soft skills, what do we offer our kids so that they can connect to the behaviors that we like to see in school that promote a safe school environment? How can they translate those into the workforce? So that was really the basis for development of our employability skills curriculum. But we utilize the CTE, Carl's Perkins, kind of outline for employability skills to give our overarching topics for students to explore. Go ahead, Ash, one more. All right, so really, the purpose of the curriculum, it's for 6 through 12, was to provide a framework for principals and teachers of the essential employability skills to be taught by quarter, by grade level. So every single 6 through 12 school has a chunk of time built in, a minimum of three times a quarter, where they will have adult relationship, student relationship activities, icebreakers, things like that. They'll do grade checks. And then there will be a lesson on employability skills so that students can see what types of behaviors they'll need in the workforce that will make them employable.
If I could add really quickly, as you know, when you're talking about employability skills or soft skills, as many people call them, these are skills not only for the workforce that people need to have when they're employed, but it also duplicates itself. Obviously, there are skills that can be used in the school. And so what we are hoping is not only are they learning these skills, obviously, for their future, but it will help foster a better environment for their learning and their communication within the school also.
All right, so just briefly, we'll tell you what those topics are, and they're scaffolded up into the 12th grade. So the 6th grade, you can see, are a little more self-awareness, managing time and materials as kids switch from elementary to mid-school, where they're switching classes. So we're gonna try to help them with those skills, self-direction. And then interpersonal skills, how do you act and interact with one another? 7th grade, we get into the critical thinking, technology use, communication and collaboration. Then 8th and 9th grade, we really ratchet it up a couple notches to career awareness. What are your post-secondary options? How do you apply what you've learned in class to the workforce, things like that? And then 10th through 12th grade, students will be in those pathways. And we're also going to take a look at things like personal finance and college and career prep. So how do you fill out the FAFSA if you're headed to college? How do you fill out the FAFSA if you want to go to a community college and obtain an AA? What can you do with your precision exam certificates to put them on a resume if you're ready to enter the workforce the day after graduation? And we're not gonna actually show it to them. So that's the helicopter view of our college and career initiative, which is definitely multi-layered. So any questions that you have? Kevin?
I'll get us kicked off.
Okay. I'll be after you.
So the goal here is to have 100% of our students involved in some kind of college and career pathway. You know, this really, I can see, I can kind of catch the vision of what you're doing. I mean, this is a long, long, long-term project. But it is so important, and I appreciate your efforts with it. Something that I would encourage you to do is to work on measurables and results. And the only thing I can think of is like, when I was going to college, there was, you know, like, the US News and World Report has like their MBA report every year. And they, you know, they take their top 50 MBA programs, and they have broken down to, you know, how much it costs, what you can expect your salary to be when you graduate, how long the average graduate waited before they had a job, you know, some of these types of things. There's gotta be some applicable metrics that we can use, you know, that can help. I think it can really help sell this program to a lot of people, but then also help us know that we're on the right track. We ultimately want our kids to be successful in whatever they, you know, career or college pathway that they choose. We want them to be successful. There's gotta be something that we can measure that by. And that's a long-term project, because, you know, it takes a year or two to get this in there. And then you've gotta have somebody that's gonna gather this data after the kids have scattered after graduation or whatever. And I don't know how you do that, but I'd encourage us to come up with some way to measure that.
Mr. Mortensen, members of the Board, as a part of your strategic plan, some of the metrics that we're using, that we've already started gathering the data, number of students in a pathway is one of the measures in the Elevate 2022. We also have number of students in employability skills courses, how many have completed that? That's also one of the metrics. And this past few weeks, a lot of parents have gotten phone calls because we have asked high schools, we're actually collecting data on what students are doing within a year out of high school. So we're seeing what students are attending college, what students are home with children, or what number of students that are in the workforce. And so we're using some of those measures to gauge how effective we're being. And you're right, it's a long-term thing. To have every student in a pathway is gonna take another year. And then to see the fruits of that labor is gonna take several years to see where those students end up. And it'd be great to get to the point where we could find out, you know, salary levels. That's a touchy subject, hard to ask somebody what they're making in a year. But we're doing the best we can to figure out what metrics we can use, and those are the first ones that we've started with.
And then also, just really quick, the precision exams, which are industry-aligned exams to most of these courses. And they're really geared at students that can get an A or B in these pathway classes. They're issued an industry certificate. But the second side of that is, they're willing to come in and meet with our industries that are local and allow them to give input into those frameworks and industry standards for the different courses. So hopefully, we can also track how many certificates, you know, our students are obtaining as they leave high school and then getting employed.
Those certifications and things like that, I mean, those in itself are measurable. If, you know, if we're graduating kids that can, you know, pass whatever professional exam or, you know, professional certificate exam on day one, I mean, that's a big deal.
And another side metric that we can look at too is, as I mentioned this before, but students who or schools who have their students involved in career pathways have a 15.9 percentage point increase in graduation rates on average across the country. And that's significant. That is a huge increase for a school to see. Now, when you take into consideration school districts that have implemented career pathways that have a high poverty level, it actually goes above 20% graduation rate increases, percentage point increases. And so that'll be something else we'll watch. Sometimes, it's not always easy to correlate the two, but we'll be looking at graduation rates over the next several years. We should see an uptick if we look at statewide averages or countrywide averages.
Mr. Mortensen, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if you want me to give you them one by one and you answer them, or do you want me to give you all of them?
Probably one by one.
Okay. The first question I have is on all of this planning. One of my concerns is our special needs children. So is this implemented, is there also a plan implemented for them? So we can see them also, I know that we have...
Project Search.
Project Search. So, but I don't see Project Search anywhere on this presentation. Is there, so how are you implementing our special needs children? Is there, so how are you implementing our special needs children?
So oftentimes, our special needs students actually do very, very well in these types of classes because they're so hands-on. So many of these classes, they've already, are very much a part of, such as welding and auto body. Any more?
It's, it's not exclusive of anybody. So any student that's enrolled in the general population will be a part of the pathways, whether they're a special education student or not. It's for all students. But for the more special needs students that you're talking about with Project Search, actually, Project Search was one of, was actually the first career pathway. It was developed on our school district. It's actually a program with mentorship where students are a part of a business where they're learning that job skill and then placed in jobs. And that's what we want to work towards for all those students who are entering the workforce right out of high school. We're actually getting to the point where we have internships and that we're placing students into positions.
One of the, I'm sorry, Mr. Wright, one of the complaints that I hear out in my, in the different schools I attend is that they want to do this, they, they have been trying to do this. But a lot of our schools do not have the funding, they lack funding, especially, we have a wood shop and a, uh...
Auto body?
Yeah, at, at, in Tharoo. But the wood shop nowadays are, are all technology. And we still have the hand saws. And everything is laser now and, but to implement that costs us money. So is that where these extra grants and extra funding will be utilized to purchase the state-of-the-art equipment for our schools?
Absolutely. So part of the Marathon Petroleum grant through high school was given $10,000 to purchase equipment for both of those programs. So, and again, on the needs assessment, I have been asking principals on a continual basis, what is it that you need? Dream big. And our financial, Giovanna has made many of those, those items happen. And I'm just keeping a running list as we apply for more and more grants, you know, as we find additional funds to be able to supply our teachers with absolutely state-of-the-art equipment.
And if I add one little piece to that is, while we will get all the equipment that we need in order to teach that career pathway and provide that for our students, industries are also stating that, across the country, that we don't necessarily want you to teach every single specific skill that they might need in our particular job, in our particular company, but they want you to learn essential skills that are a little bit more broad. And so, and then they will train those students or those applicants that receive those positions in the more specific detailed things. Now, auto shop, that might be a little bit different, but, so we're providing all that we can as a school district for those to teach the skills. The more in-depth, really high, high-tech things that students will need, the workforce and the industries are saying, let us train them in that. You just provide them those essential skills to, to enter the workforce.
And part of my job is to go out there and make those community connections. A good example is entering into conversations with Los Alamos Labs that are not looking for four-year degree people. They are desperate for middle-skilled lab technicians. And having them come in and talk to our students about if you finish a viable employability skills curriculum and a three-course sequence of biomedical, we will take it from there.
Right.
So...
And so part of that too is they'll get training, we want to get to the point where those students are actually in internships with businesses and they'll get some of that extra skill development while they're on the job.
The other thing that I was kind of looking at, I know that, and you probably don't know why, but I just, I just wanted to mention it, like Tohatchie, Tohatchie High School, they, we always hear about their, I think it's eight, nine carports for automotive, but they're not even looking at automotive. And then we hear about Crown Point's welding shop that, you know, they have a huge welding shop. It's not one of their career pathways. I, I, I would, I would think they would be the first ones to pick that, but I don't know why. It's maybe because it's with the CTE course or something? I don't know, but I was just kind of pointed that, wanted to point that out. The other thing, under your areas that you want to train students, like with resumes and, you know, different, different things that, how to get ready for college and stuff, I think one of the things that I've seen a lot of our students that would come back through the community center is the culture shock that they have when they do go into a university, especially a huge one. And they don't start off small, they jump right into a huge university and leaving home. And I think we got to prepare our kids for that. We are not preparing them to where they're ready for a huge university. And what does it mean to attend a huge university like Yale or, you know, something to that effect? Because we do have kids that qualify to get there, but then they last a year and they come back. And I think that, or maybe working gradually up from a community college to a university may be an option for some of our students. And I, I just would like to see that kind of training or lesson or something also brought to our children. The last thing I wanted to mention, or, no, not to last, I'm sorry, we need more emphasis on scholarships. And I think now that we've updated our website, maybe start uploading the scholarships that are available to our students that can look at the website and see, I mean, parents are trying to research them, are like, I, I have a senior this year and I'm trying to research them. You know, there's like Coca-Cola and the electric company, but if there's just a direct website that kids can look at on our website that they can link into, would be so beneficial. I know their counselors are busy also doing multiple tasking with school schedules, and I know that's the academic counselor's responsibility too, but I think it'd just be another benefit for us to have that kind of resource that we can click on and look at. And the last question is internships. You know, I really appreciate the, what you said about the internships, but we have wonderful companies, wonderful home companies that would love to take internships in. And even with our own Navajo Nation and Zuni or, you know, the colleges around here. And I think we need to start building those relationships and partnerships with, so we can have the internships. I know Mr. Mortensen, at, at one time, he would welcome, even in his business, some internships to help. So just, I think that's very valuable to get the hands-on because our children are hands-on learners. And we, there's only so much we can learn from a book until you get the hands-on experience. And my daughter took nursing and she said, nope, it's not for me. And she went into forensic investigator position instead of into nursing. So, you know, they don't know it until they experience it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to just clarify real quick, sometimes the heading, the overarching clusters are a bit misleading. So when you see Crown Point High School, as far as, they do actually have welding one, welding two, and welding three. It's not called a welding pathway, it's called the manufacturing pathway. And, and why they do that is, is to offer kids kind of like architecture and, and construction. You, you don't want to pigeonhole kids. You want to offer them all of the jobs on the spectrum from high school path to middle skill path to BA doctorate path. These are all of the jobs on the spectrum, but we're going to offer you a really great learning experience through welding one, welding two, and welding three in conjunction to your other core classes so that you have a better opportunity to see relevance, which is what Ms. Manuelito just spoke about, and also to explore, maybe you hate welding, maybe you actually find out that cluster means very little to you and you want to switch over into the health science medical field. So I think that was just an important point. That's how they're headed so that we don't track kids into a certain profession.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
I have one comment. Ms. Manuelito, members of the board, you asked about emphasis on scholarships for seniors. That's another program that we're implementing or expanded, rather, is their reader-to-reader program for seniors. They work with them for semester, talking about college applications, beefing up their essays for applications, researching scholarships, how do you get a higher score at ACT, those kind of things? So they're working with them. And then in the second semester, they work primarily with the juniors to say, hey, what are you doing on your ACT? What are your plans? How are you going to get to college instead of the big giant universities? Well, how, start small, what can you do here within the community? Develop Plan A, B, and C so when A doesn't come through, you have Plan B. So we do have that program available for our seniors and our juniors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that presentation is thoughtful and I can, I can tell you guys are locking it out, man. It's a lot of work and I appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Hyatt, it doesn't look like we have any more reports, we've got a, or superintendent reports. Let's get back to the, the two public comments that we have. The first one I'll, I'll welcome here is our council delegates, Mr. Mark Freeland and Mr. Parnell. How do you, how do you say the last name?
Halona.
Okay. Sorry, I just can't read the handwriting.
I'm Parnell Halona, council delegate from Tohatchie, Twin Lakes, Mexican Springs, Cody Canyon, and Naxity. I just wanted to come and talk to you a little bit about Impact Aid and stuff and see if we're still working on that. And that we still support that. And, you know, I'm not sure exactly how far we've gotten about it, but I've talked to Mr. Hyatt about it a couple of times. But I just wanted to make sure that we got that back on the table again and that the Navajo Nation, we support that Impact Aid. And so if there's anything that we can do to help keep that moving, rolling along, that's, that's part of the reason why we're here tonight.
Thank you. I'll, I'll talk to you as soon as I listen to Mr. Freeland. And I can, I can catch you up a little bit. We talked a little bit about it at the start of the meeting and I can give you a little more information.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Honorable members of the Gallup McKinney County School Board, Superintendent Hyatt, staff, as well as visitors as well, I wanted to come by this evening to introduce myself. My name is Mark Freeland. I'm a product of, I'm a proud product of Gallup McKinney County Schools. I went to Tohatchie High School, but I'm a new member of the 24th Nomination Council as well. Originally from Crown Point area, oh, actually White Rock and Lake Valley, and I represent eight chapters out in Eastern Agency. Crown Point is my, my big one, my help. I represent Crown Point, so of course we've got Crown Point High, Crown Point Mid, and Crown Point Elementary there. But I also represent the communities of Nahatish Kish, Te Aha, the Senti, Lake Valley, White Rock, Orphano, and Naize. So I really have two school districts in my eight chapters. The northern two chapters fall under Bloomfield, which are Orphano and Naize. So I've had an opportunity to go up there and introduce myself as well. So I thought I'd come down and, and introduce myself to you all as well. My, you know, as a new delegate, I've been really busy, we've been really busy these last few months, six months of our tenure, really working a lot of orientation, working with our chapters, going out and talking to various people, meeting with other entities. This area of education is very vital for us, especially in our rural communities, our, our reservation schools. Knowing that I've had an opportunity to go to Crown Point High, I've got, I have an opportunity to go to Crown Point Mid, I've had an opportunity to go to Crown Point Elementary and visit with them, knowing what their challenges are. And to me, as a new delegate, that's real important because I want every child to have that opportunity as much as I did, as much as probably we all did. But for me, that's real vital. And, you know, I come here as a, I don't have an olive branch or a dove, but to, you know, extend my, extend our, our, our partnership or, or, you know, a way to say, how can we work together? You know, Navajo Nation is a sleeping giant right now. And I say this because we have a lot of resources that we could bring to the school district and really offer and help in a lot of ways. I'm a member of the Resource and Development Committee, which oversees a lot of infrastructure and a lot of economic development projects. But I also am the chairman of the, what we call the Navikiya Tiet State Task Force. Navikiya Tiet works with the three state governments, well, actually, now it's four. So we work with the state governments of New Mexico, Arizona, Utah, and now Colorado because we do have travel land in Colorado as well. So I'm the chair of that. One of our emphasis is really working on state issues. And today, we had an opportunity to meet with our, we have two candidates for lobbyists for our council. And that's going to be real important for us is who we select as our lobbyists going forward on the Mexico side. Two strong candidates. And there's a lot of emphasis that we're going to, we're going to, we're going to work on is revamping our priorities. One of those real big priorities is going to be education. And the partnership that I mentioned earlier, how can we partner together to make the school district even better? Looking at your graphs, seeing the achievements that you all have, how can we close those gaps together? How can we work together in achieving those, 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 the closure of those gaps? One thing I'm glad my, my colleague mentioned was the Impact Aid situation. Knowing that Impact Aid, how it could potentially help the school district is going to be very, very vital. And I'm glad I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Hyatt in Santa Fe about this. And, you know, really push the emphasis of reformalization at the state level. How can we be a partner in that and helping you all? You know, push, push to the governor, the Mexico PED, or the legislature, how can we, how can we work together to make that happen? Because our kids deserve that. You all deserve new school buses, I know. You all could, you all could get new school books. You know, just basic things like that, we kind of work together on. The other one is the Yasi Martinez lawsuit situation. How can we emphasize to the state, you know, we need to, we need more money, basically? There's not enough money to go around. So really advocacy is going to be important for us in the Santa Fe level. Don't forget McKinney County, don't forget the Navajo Nation, because that's one of our, our big points is, you know, our kids are, are the ones who generate a lot of that, those, those dollars for the state. So that's going to be one important point that we take away. The other thing I was looking at was all of your funding, your JOM, your Title VII grants, the money that you get from Title VII from your reform, Indian education monies, your New Mexico Indian Education Act money. How can we help you all, you know, get more, get more dollars for these programs, especially JOA? Looking at the federal level, the ESSA stuff, every, every student succeeds that. How can we help you all at that level as well? Because there's going to be times we'll be going to DC as well. And we'll be able to get the ears of, of senators or representatives at the DC level. So looking at the Impact Aid situation, looking at ESSA, you know, JOM, dollars are shrinking, yes, but how can we partner together to make this happen in reality for our kids? I always, I have a saying when I work with our people back on, on the reservation, it's like, you know, this is a great experience for us. This is a really great experience, a great experience for me. But we have to remember who we serve. We have to remember who benefits from the work that we do. So it's not us, it's not me, it's a great experience for me, but it's our, it's our people. And I really believe in that. I believe in it because our kids deserve it. You know, I believe in that. So with that, I just came here to mention that and talk and, and mention that, I introduced myself earlier and say that I'm here to help. We're all, we're here to help us, as my colleague mentioned. He's on the Health, Education, Human Services Committee, so he's very vital to what you all do. He's, he's from Tohatchie though, but I won't give him that much. But anyway, I just came here this evening just to say thank you. I apologize for being late. Next time if I come, I'll be here before six. I started my day in Fort Defiance, I ran up to Upper Fruitland, Farmington, ran back to Wonder Rock, and I'm here tonight. So that's my day. So I appreciate the time and the opportunity. So with that, I want to say thank you and God bless you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. The fight between Tohatchie and Crown Point is real.
If I could just mention one thing, both of these gentlemen were very helpful in our Impact Aid fight this year. It's, it's, they're not just coming for information, they were involved in the fight and we really appreciate them with several other council delegates, but these were two in the forefront of that fight.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your help. We appreciate you coming and participating, and we really look forward to working with you both more in the future. Our last public comment is Sunlatsa Jim Martin.
Yate, thank you for allowing me to get on the public comment, Mr. Mortensen. I appreciate that. I am Sunlatsa Jim Martin, and many of you know me by the name of Sunshine. I'm not new to public comments, you all know me. I want to say that I came here tonight to start off the school year on a positive foot. And, you know, I was disappointed that I did have to get some assistance to get on the agenda tonight. I did not know that there was a rule to have public comment forums submitted by 6 o'clock. was a rule to have public comment forums submitted by six o'clock. That was never disclosed to me. That's not written on any policy. That's not written on any public document. And that definitely was not communicated to parents. So I think that if there is such a rule that we have to be here before six to submit our comments, that needs to be disclosed to the public. That way, we know. I'm a working parent. I'm an indigenous mother. I'm proud to be a Native American mother of four outstanding daughters from the school district. And as a mother, I will not let my voice be silenced. That's why this communication is so important. I came here this evening to start off the school year by letting you know how thankful I am for the McKinley Academy Program. And I am wanting to say that our senior who graduated from the McKinley Academy Program just transferred all her credits from UNM Gallup, and now she's a year ahead at the university that she's going to be attending. And I'm so thankful for the McKinley Academy Program, because it is something that we've been asking for from our Tohatchee High School community. And I'm so thankful that we have buses now that take our students to McKinley Academy and get them back to the high school. With that being said, there are always improvements, and I'm here to share some of that. My number one recommendation, not just for McKinley Academy, but for Tohatchee High School, where my daughters are at, as well as Twin Lakes Elementary School, where my little one is at, and then for many of the schools that are in our rural county area. As our honorable leaders said tonight, we do come from all areas of the Navajo Nation, and we are a part of this school district. And so for me, I really, really am asking our superintendent, Mr. Hyatt, we need better communication. Us parents are not getting improvements in communication like we need. Little steps have helped, but the frustration still continues at all levels. This is one example, the public comments tonight. Secondly, the communication for parents, really, for us working parents, I think is really critical to acknowledge that. Because I got off work in Winter Rock, I now work in Winter Rock, and I didn't want to speed, so I got to picking up my elementary daughter from the bus, and then rushed out here, and then hit an ambulance, because I take this back road from the hospital, and that delayed me to get here at six o'clock. So you have to always remember, those of us from the rural county have extra circumstances that we deal with to get to these meetings. I feel for the parents at Seagai, Mr. Freeland, that's your district. I feel for the parents from Crown Point, the parents from Reima, the parents from Navajo Pine, to get to your meeting on time. So I am asking you, find ways to get better communication to our parents in the rural county areas. That will really help. I know that it was a struggle last year to get all of you board members to come out to our rural county area to host your school board meetings. I think that is really needed. So you can help meet our community members out in the rural county. For me, again, as a working parent, that's so critical. I also want to suggest the various forms of communication. I know that this video, or video streaming that we're doing is really helpful. And I know it took us parents, us active parents from years ago, to push the issue that we needed to know what's happening at these school board meetings. And it's because of us active parents that we got this video streaming going. I know it's because of us active parents and community leaders that we pushed for better academic services, especially to the rural county. And it's because of us active parents and community leaders that our tests and scores are going up. It's all a big community effort to make this, these improvements happen. And again, this is prior to the superintendent, but now we're seeing the fruits of that. And then also, I want to say, the radios, I know we started doing good with radio announcements, and then I didn't hear them anymore from Gallup McKinley County Schools. The audio phone system, it was happening, and then when school's out, it's like just disappears. And then school kicks in, and then we don't hear the audio calls until two months into the school year, they start activating it. So we need to do better, because for all the first of the school year stuff, it would have been nice to get texts like I was during the school year. But that kicks in later, and I don't know what system kicks that off here. But it should be kicking in before the school starts. I got two. And that's not a lot of information on a text. Emails, we used to get a lot of emails, too. It was tied to this audio phone text system, and then that stopped. So I don't know if it's because you're changing systems or whatnot, but as parents, we really valued that information that was coming through email. And then, trying to talk fast. And then, your website, it would really be nice, I know it's going under some kind of revision or improvements, but the school year has already started, and I would have liked to see a lot more information to get my children ready for the school year on the website, especially McKinley Academy. It hasn't been touched. And then using the newspapers and the flyers and social media has been helpful. But, you know, this might be old school, but it works, especially out in the rural communities, and that's your notes coming back home from your child. The notes to go back to your parents. So I do really want to encourage communication, communication, communication. That would really be helpful for the school year. And now that I'm working full-time, I wanted to make it a point tonight to bring this to your attention and just tell you how thankful I am for the McKinley Academy Program. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. We appreciate all those who participated in the meeting this evening. The next portion of our, of our meeting is Study Circle. It's down in 5B2. Are there any reports that any of the fellow board members have to, to report, or anything relevant to, to report to folks this evening?
Mr. Mortensen, I don't really have a report, but I just want to say thank you to our two council delegates, Mr. Mark Freeland and Mr. Halona, for attending our meeting tonight and addressing us the way they did, as well as the two parents. Those are very important to us as we start our new school year. And I also want to say that, you know, I think our new logo is outstanding. You know, I saw that write off, and I, it's wonderful.
Mr. Mortensen, I would also like to comment. Mr. Freeland and Mr. Halona, I would, I would, I know during public comment, we really can't respond to their, their questions, but we are having a meeting in Tharoo. Our next Gallup McKinley County Board meeting is Tharoo. And I would either suggest two things. We do a work session with our, our community leaders, our partners that we have, and, and really unite with their concerns with impact aid and different things that they were talking about. Or we add them to the agenda in Tharoo's meeting, so we can collaborate with them. Because right now, I know with our Open Meetings Act, we really can't communicate with them due to that policy. But I would either like to add them to the agenda, or, because I did invite Mr. Yazi, and I did invite Mr. So, council delegate So, and Mr. Freeland to our next board meeting, which is going to be in their area of Tharoo. So that would be my recommendation. And it was nice to see the new teachers. We attended, I think most of us attended the new teacher orientation. And it's nice to be out, and the schools are active again, and the children are back. And I'm just very thankful to all our staff to making that possible, and to the parents. Thank you for entrusting your kids to us again with GMCS. And we're just thankful to have them back in school and a safe place where they'll continue to gain the knowledge they need for their future. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Manuelito.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing.
Nothing. And I don't have anything as well. Notices and communications down there? I'll leave that up to folks to read on their own about the upcoming events and, and things for, for our district. Item down in the new business, 6A, approval. Okay. We'll let, we'll let Giovanna, I think, present this one. Are you doing A and B, or just A?
Mr. Mortensen, just A.
Okay. You sure you don't want B also?
I don't think Mr. Bond would be happy if I spoke on his behalf.
He'd be thrilled. Giovanna, the floor is yours, please.
Mr. Mortensen, members of the board, members of the audience and staff, this relates back to that $6.3 million that Mr. Hyatt spoke about at the beginning of the meeting. This, although we haven't received the funds yet, we have begun the preliminary steps of actually notifying the bondholders of our early payment and defeasance of those bonds, as well as the establishment of a escrow account to put those funds into, so that we could pay out those bonds early. So that's essentially what those two documents are that are in your packet. Although, again, we don't have the money yet, these are just the preliminary steps, so that we can be agile enough, once we get the money, to actually move forward with the payment of those bonds.
So this will pay off the bonds totally? Those, the teacherage ones that we're talking about?
It will. The two teacher housing, so what, what we've been doing, because the, they're revenue bonds, so the funds that were pledged against those bonds were our operational impact aid funds. And the variability of those funds is pretty significant. Anybody who was around in 2013 for sequestration knows, that was a very rough year, very rough year for Gallup McKinley County Schools. So we have been very conservative in the way that we've actually been making payments on those and monitoring our impact aid funds. So we're actually in a position with these funds from the state to actually pay the remainder off. We started off with principal and interest of $50 million being owed from Gallup McKinley County Schools for the building of teacher housing in our county schools, and we still have teacher housing needs in the school district. So this will help us pay off just the last little bit that is left on those bonds. The original date of retirement was 2026.
Wow. What's the debt service payment on these?
So it varies. We pay principal and interest August 1st, and then interest payments February 1st, and those range from $2.5 million to $3 million a year. So typically, you guys approved for me in May, a move from operational funds into debt service to make this payment. I'm hoping not to come back to you with another one of those movements anytime soon, so that we can use those funds for our kids in the classroom.
We'll be, they'll be freed up to be able to use for operations, any, anything we want within reach.
Absolutely. Yeah. It's, I mean, it's, it's great. I wish it was more. Like I said, we started at 50 million, so we really did the heavy lifting.
So Giovanna, Mr. Mortensen?
Yes, ma'am.
We're paying off two?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Originally, we had three. In 2012, I actually refinanced the bonds and moved it down to two in order to get a lower interest rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Giovanna, I appreciate it. Do we have a motion on this action item?
Motion.
All right, in a second. Okay, so Giovanna, item 6A, Approval of Defeasance and Redemption Resolution and the escrow agreement. Motion was made to approve it by Kevin Mitchell and the second by Michael Shaw. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
Great news. And the next item is 6B, and I understand that's Mr. Bond. It's your lucky day. Come on up.
So good evening, board members and audience. I was here last board meeting, and this item was a discussion item. And really, it's to change board policy concerning workers' comp. And so we have been meeting with the Workers' Compensation Administration, and what our policy in the past has been, that if an employee of our district gets hurt, the workers' comp pays two-thirds of their salary. And what was happening is, we were paying the other third, so that all of our employees were getting their full pay, even though they weren't here at work. And so in meeting with the Workers' Comp Administration, they suggested that because of that policy, we really were encouraging people not to come back to work. And so what they had suggested, and this is what most businesses do, is that they allow workers' comp to just pay the two-thirds salary. And so that's what they suggested that we change our policy to. And so you will see that the executive summary kind of talks a little bit about that, where if an employee gets hurt, then the first seven days, they can either take their own sick leave and still get paid their full salary. And then if they're not back to work after that, those seven days really include a weekend. And so on the eighth day, then what would happen is, workers' comp would begin to pay them weekly for two-thirds of the salary that they're making here. Or there's actually a cap on that. If they make more money than, I believe it is about $820 a week, then that's the max that workers' comp would pay them until they return to work. So I am here to hope that you approve this new policy, so that we can get this in place, because this will help kids, it will help our employees get back to work, which will benefit our students in the long run. If you have any questions, I'm open.
It's a no-brainer. Are there any questions?
I just, I just want, just to make a clarification. So you're saying that when we pay the full amount, one, two-thirds from workers' comp, one-third from GMCS, that our, our employees are not coming back to work?
Not always, but it does encourage them to take as much time as they need, because they're getting paid full, full salary. So that is kind of, I mean, again, there's people that abuse policy, and there's those who don't. And so by changing policy, we get in line with most of the industries that are covered by workers' comp. And so hopefully, we get people back to work as quick as they possibly can.
Workmen's comp is not designed to be a long-term
Correct.
You know, a long-term solution. It's meant to be a short-term solution to help you, you know, recover whatever from what, whatever the, the incident is. I mean, it's designed to help folks out that are, you know, had an accident, a workplace accident, or something like that. It's not for, you know, to cover if you, you know, get hurt at the rodeo on the weekend or something. It's, it covers you if you're hurt on the job site. And it's designed to help give you some relief, so you can get back to work as quick as possible. There's plenty of other solutions for, that are long-term, long-term solutions, but I mean, it's a, this is a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, as a school district, we do not want people coming back to work who can't work.
Of course.
But we definitely want them back if they can, because it encourages them to come back, and it helps our kids, like I said, to have a certified teacher in classrooms, if it's a teacher, or trained individuals in the other positions that they may hold with the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Do we have a motion, anybody?
I would like to make a motion. We approve the change in board policy concerning workers' compensation regulations.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call, please, Joan.
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bond. That concludes our agenda this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, and the second, please?
Our second.
Second by Priscilla. Roll call, please, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. 7:48, we are adjourned.
7:48.